Good morning, all. Welcome to our September meeting. Jasmine, would you take the roll call, please?
Yep, Mark Thorold.
Yeah.
Amy Von Edier.
Here.
Edger House.
I'm here.
Tom LaCount.
Here.
Jane Gutcombe.
Here.
Ryan Berryan.
Here.
Excellent. And I wonder if we have any interest, a conflict of interest to close this thing?
I do.
Thank you.
Jackson Crossing.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else with a conflict of interest? If something appears at time, just let us know. Proof of meeting notice without?
Yes.
Thank you. Bills and communications. Done. Now, approval of minutes, we have two sets of minutes, July 9th and August 20th to approve. Would be like to make, make a motion for them separately or together. It's fine, buddy.
I'll make a motion to approve the July 9th minutes.
Yes.
And the August 20 minutes.
Second.
Thank you.
Ryan Berryan, you approve?
Uh, I was not at the meeting minutes, so I'm staying for that.
Jane Gutcombe?
Approve.
Tom LaCount?
Approve.
Edger House?
Approve.
Amy Von Edier?
Approve.
Approve. Right. So Jane, thank you if you could ask the financials.
Yes. Looking at the balance sheet, we have cash of 2.5 million. We have a small accounts payable, which is just a reimbursement for the insurance to the LDC. Looking at the P and L, we have revenue of 139,000 to a budget of 309,000. So we are unfavorable by 170,000. We have expenses of 481,000 to a budget of 747,000. So far, we're favorable by 265,000. We had a net loss of 342,000 to a budgeted net loss of 438,000. So far, we're favorable by 96,000. But again, the revenue is where we're going to be unfavorable to budget if we don't have any admin fees.
Thank you.
Any questions?
So the bright spark there is the interest.
Yes.
All right. Good. So reports from committees, no committee meetings, and any unfinished business. Don't leave a sod. So our first item for consideration is the approval and final authorizing resolution for the POU development. We've been trying to Wapinjor to approve for providing a mortgage tax exemption, sales tax exemption, and a pilot for approximately $40,847,143 construction and development of hangars at the regional airport. So let's see how we should, would you like to tee this up then, Ron?
I believe the applicant is either.
Maybe I just saw Neil on the screen.
Hey, how you doing? Neil Simzak here.
I will tee it up. Good morning. Yeah.
Good morning.
This is a project we've been, as you know, we've been trying to work on, highest and best use development at the airport. Began with deployment of solar array, water infrastructure, improvements to the terminal. And I think probably one of the greatest accomplishments was the new hangar for the Duchess Community College program, which has been at capacity with its students, teaching them how to fly, but more importantly, teaching them how to fix aircraft. And thanks to the significant investment by the county legislature and DCC, programs were very successful. All these students have been getting job offers apparently before they graduate with a certificate, with an income that will allow them to afford an apartment in Duchess County. Very successful. And part of that pipeline, if you will, was to complete it with activities that could do externships or organizations that could do externships or internships with the school, as well as provide job opportunities. And one of those opportunities is through new aircraft at the airport being based there, whether it be for general storage or for maintenance. And so Sky Harbor was attracted to our shovel-ready site that we had created by the county. Again, the county legislature invested in that effort. And we were hoping to just get 36,000 square feet, but we're very excited that they wanted more at our airport because of the operations and opportunities. So they originally had proposed up to 100,000 square feet. We were looking at two sites. Unfortunately, due to new FAA, I'm sorry, EPA regulations that were enacted shortly after the signing of a lease agreement, we've had to go through a very costly and protracted process with the DEC related to PFAS contamination at the airport. Sky Harbor has stuck it out and has continued to work with us, but we had to separate the project into two separate projects and are only moving forward with the north side at this time. And we're at the, almost at the finish line with regard to the DEC. And again, happy that Sky Harbor has stuck with us and expects to develop this north side for these new hangars.
Thank you, Ron. Neil, would you like to add to that? And I'm sure we'd be interested to hear what, can you hear me well enough?
Yeah, I got you. I got you, yeah.
Okay.
Sure, I can, I can make a couple of comments. Great. So my name is Neil Simzak. I'm a senior vice president of real estate development at the Sky Harbor group. And it's really been great to work with Ron and the Duchess team over the past about two and a half years as we've been navigating, you know, the pre-development efforts and New York State DEC. But I think we're, there's light at the end of the tunnel, and we're really excited about investing $30 million into the Hudson Valley Regional Airport. And I think the IDA will be a critical element to make the project investable for us. But by way of background, Sky Harbor is a publicly traded infrastructure development company, traded on the New York Stock Exchange under ticker symbol SKY. We have a national presence. We're at 18 locations across the country, including Miami, Nashville, Dulles, Phoenix, Dallas, Denver, and locations in California. But Poughkeepsie will be our first New York location, and it's near and dear to our heart because we're headquartered out of Westchester County Airport. But, so we know the New York market really well, and we're already talking to several aircraft owners and operators that want space at the airport. In terms of the development details, we are going to build two 40,000-square-foot hangars, each with several thousand square feet of office space in the back. So this will really be designed for the top 10% to 20% of flight departments in the region that want a base at Hudson Valley Regional Airport. Like Ron mentioned, we're talking about probably 10 aircraft, late-generation aircraft, that each support anywhere from seven to eight jobs, multiple pilots, schedulers, dispatchers, and a whole host of jobs that are supported, that support those aircraft. They'll be based at Hudson Valley Regional. And we know that, I think it'll be a great way to modernize the airport, drive economic activity, and be a great asset for the county and the region. The other, the other thing that we have is something called the Sky Harbor Academy, which is a complementary workforce development program to what is already existing at the airport today. Instead of focusing on maintenance training, we focus on entry-level jobs that are jobs, sort of a job that's a gateway to management in business aviation. They're called line service technicians. So we have a four-month training program where we actually train line service technicians. We work with local community colleges to identify high-potential applicants. We put them through a four-month training course. At the end of that, they get a NADA certification and a job offer with Sky Harbor or one of the local FBOs or the airlines. But it's a, it's a great community add and benefit for the area and for sort of deepening the bench for available talent in business aviation. So that's, that's sort of a summary of the project. Our timeline here, we're expecting to break ground in Q1 of next year. And then Q1, Q2 of 2027, we expect to be fully operational, you know, pending environmental reviews and final FAA approvals. So it's great to be here today and really appreciate your consideration on the, the IDA.
Thank you. Excellent. Ron, good.
If I could just offer also, New York creates a difficult environment for airports that are not owned and operated by the state of New York, like Stewart Airport or the New York, New Jersey Port Authority. They are exempt from taxation. Our property is exempt right now. They're building on what is right now grass fields. But they are going to be paying taxes. They are making a 40-year commitment to, to the county with this lease agreement. And, and so we're trying to level the playing field that exists at Stewart Airport, Peterborough Airport, Republic Airport, I believe it is, or Farmingdale in Long Island. So they will be providing a great contribution to, to the economy despite these exemptions.
Right. So we, we're in a competitive environment, and this is important to back up the, the investment that the county is making in, in skilled labor training and so on. So this sounds like it fits well. So in terms of maybe, Alan and Liz, just give me an opinion. In terms of the application, the project has changed somewhat. And so I'm wondering, obviously, are, you know, final resolutions and so on reflect those changes? But is there other paperwork that needs to be done to, to indicate those changes in the scale and scope?
So the, there was a public hearing that was held on the original project description, and then when they had to change it due to what Ron had explained about the, the longer timeline for the south side of the project. We had another public hearing on the revised project description that was held in August. So this is reflective of the description that was in that new public hearing. As far as whether there was a separate cost-benefit analysis, we don't usually see those. I don't know if there was a new, a revised cost-benefit analysis that was circulated, but that would usually be.
I've seen only one, yeah.
It might be that the, the change in the scope of the project didn't actually change the cost-benefit analysis. But that's the only other thing that would be, that I would.
Yeah, I do want to point out that, you know, this project is a standalone project. If and when that second, the cleanup has occurred and they do do that, there'll be a further environmental review of that, and they will also include the analysis of that first, this first part. But this first part is a standalone project. So, and that's all we can do unless and until there's any cleanup and the parties come to, you know, full agreement on that.
Okay. Mr. Simzak, is that right? You're, you're looking actually to potentially expand that facility in the future up to the?
Yeah, that's true. There's a southern site that we are, that we're targeting to develop as well. However, it's, it's quite a bit delayed from an environmental review standpoint. So we're trying to move fast on the northern site that we're calling it. So that is an accurate statement.
I also just want to be transparent. The, the final determination from the DEC had not come through yet, and we've not been able to estimate the costs for any mitigation. The worst-case scenario that we've come up with would, would probably not allow this project to move forward because of the, the cost to county. So right now, this project is, while you may incentivize this project, this project is, is not going forward until the, we get that determination. We've got the, the estimates for the cost of mitigation. And then, of course, Sky Harbor's ability to continue. So this, this meeting does not mean it's a done deal yet.
Right.
For the north side, south side, got a whole nother issue.
Right. So members of the board, anybody else with questions?
Ron, can you explain that one more time?
Sorry. The.
So there's two parcels. The one we have in front of us that had the new public hearing was the north or the south?
North.
The north, okay. So the north is what's in front of us.
Originally, we had gone to create a shovel-ready site on the north.
Right.
And that was for about 36,000 square feet of handerspace. They came in, they said we'd like to build out the entire space that's available, and then they'd like to take another site on the airport that was offered for development. We had originally come in with both sites. We were doing the environmental work, ran into this PFAS issue.
On which site?
Both, actually. But we could only afford at this time to address the north side. And legislature's been very generous in, in allowing us to continue to, to manage this. We're going to need to remediate it one way or another. And so they changed the, the project. We had a new public hearing, and here they are before us with the final resolution on the north side for what they had originally proposed to fully build out. If we still have to wait to find out what the DEC is going to require us to do with the site?
On the north side with PFAS remediation?
Correct.
Okay.
And then what the costs are associated with that remediation. If, if they, we are actually investing in some analysis to look at the south side to see where the contamination is and to what extent. And, and if everything, depending on what the DEC says, if the north side's able to go forward, we'll run the numbers and find out if it makes sense to continue investing in the south side for the county. And if we can do it and Sky Harbor remains interested, we will then go to the south side. But I'm, we're looking another two years, I think, on the south side before that becomes an option.
So what's contingent where you said it's not a done deal?
This, if this board approves this, that's just one more hurdle that we had to get through. We still have to find out from the DEC what they're going to need us to do with the, any contaminated soil and what that's going to cost to remediate.
On the north side?
Correct.
Okay.
And the, the worst-case scenario, the numbers are so high, it does not make sense to move forward.
Period.
Period for either county or Sky Harbor.
On either parcel.
Yes. Well, definitely on the north is what we'll, we'll know. And we'll have an idea on the south as to what that formula is going to look like and if we can figure out how much contamination is down there. And by the way, this contamination has nothing to do with county operations.
No.
This is from federal mandates and state operations. So that's where we are. So I didn't want anyone to think that just because this, this is approved, that they're going to be breaking ground tomorrow. There are still significant obstacles and costs moving forward, and we have to make that decision when we hear finally from the DEC and other members.
Thank you. Good. Thank you.
If I just may ask.
Oh, go ahead.
No, it's fine. My understanding is that there, for, for, that we were able to name the airport Brownfield Site, and that allowed us to tap into some tax incentives and some grant dollars. Is that still on the table, that the county is going for some significant grant opportunities to have the DEC do some, give us some financial assistance on the site?
Yeah, we're, no, no tax incentives, but we're going to go, try to go after some money to recapture, to, to offset these costs. I do not have a lot of confidence that we are going to be able to get anything. And I could talk to you about that offline. It's a very competitive process, and the way we were moved into it, I think, was a little unfortunate in the timing. So we're going to do our best.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. So would anyone like to make a motion for approval of this process, of this application?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Second. Jasmine, would you take the roll, please?
Ryan Berryan?
Approved.
Jane Gutcombe?
Approve.
Tom LaCount?
Approve.
Edger House?
Approve.
Amy Von Edier?
Approve.
Martha?
Approve.
Thank you. Good luck going forward.
Thank you, dear.
Thanks, everyone. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Be good.
Take care.
Thank you. Right. Our next item is Jackson Crossing Resolution. And I'll read it out. Thank you. You're going to accuse yourself if they're in, if they're up there.
Yeah, they're out there.
Yep. Well, let's just wait.
Boy, PFAS and airports, they just attract each other, huh?
It's, it's all over.
No, store contaminated.
It's just over.
It's not a new word.
The landfill. I mean, they've been using it. And like, yeah, can I have a litigation? Or, I was in the county. So that goes, wait.
Our fire training center, where New York State did the operations, it has contamination because of their work.
Fire suppression?
Morning.
Good morning.
Hey.
We can see this sometime.
Good morning. Good, right. Jane, would you like, is that fine? Or do you want to come around the backside along here? Just, we're okay standing.
We're okay standing. You know, no, no, we're good. Nobody wants to look the back of the seat.
Yeah.
Someone take my chair.
So just spread out on the other side.
I'm sitting a lot today, so my chair is free.
Bigger room.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Shat enough.
Okay. Pretty, pretty good. So I think the best would be for you, please our guests to just introduce themselves quickly because otherwise I'm sure I'm going to not get the names completely correct. Mr. Tinkelman, you go first.
Sure. Steven Tinkelman from Tinkelman Architecture, one of our partners as well.
Yeah, I'm Kenneth Amstenger. I represent Fishkill Crossing LLC. I live in Fishkill. I live in Duchess County.
Thank you.
Vito Eriko. I'm one of the developers, a part of the project.
David Stanger, also a part of the developers.
John Eriko. I'm also on development side. And yeah, happy to be here.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. So this has been quite a long, a long process. And we have somewhat interestingly, we don't always have pure residential applications. So there's been some discussion on that factor. However, your application has gone through the process because it fits the prescriptions of the, of the program that we offer, the IDA program that we offer. And we, we have various items in our, in our UTEP that, criteria that we go through. So I think that what I'd like to do is listen to your, you have a presentation that you'd like to make?
We do.
Very good. We'll do that first. We'll have a discussion with, and questions from members of the board and, and a vote after that. So if you'd like to go ahead, that'd be fine. Thank you.
So, good morning. I, I'll try to keep this brief, but there are a lot of numbers of what I, I wanted to describe to you. So as I said, I represent Jackson Crossing. My brother is part of that group. I've lived in Fishkill for the last 40 years. I was in Duchess County all my life. So we're not, this is probably in all that time, this is the second time only I've been in front of this board, and that was about 10, 15 years ago. So if I get the presentation wrong, I apologize in advance. The, but what I, what I looked at here was this. I wanted to talk a little bit about the village and the town because that's where I live. And I want to talk about the numbers that popped out of the Kamoyne Report because that's where I think the meat of our argument is. The, the village, you know, I live right there where the project's going to be built. So I know that intersection very well. I'm in and out of that thing three times a day on my way to the office, on my way back. It's the Iron Triangle. But here's what's interesting. The zoning history, I know the zoning history is not an issue here. But what's interesting is in the village, the village wanted this project. They rezoned their property. They custom rezoned this property to allow this project to be built here. The mayor supported that effort, in fact, was the chairman of it and voted for the rezoning. The rezoning made certain that this project would fit into the village's comprehensive plan. So this is not the case that we're trying to graft a project on top of existing zoning. This is a case where a community created the zoning to allow this project to go forward. And it did so, I, I was not part of that process. I've been involved in this now for about a month. But I look at it, where I live and seeing Fishkill, it did so because in the village, we have this huge piece of land that has nothing on it. It could be a park. Some people might like to see it be a park. Or it could be something else that we need in our town, in our village, if it's going to continue to grow, which is housing. Now, I, I know that there is a housing project. I've read all the arguments that it doesn't generate economic impact. But I, I would like to say to you, it does. And I'd like to show you how your Kamoyne Report demonstrates that. But I want to make one other thing very clear. We all live in that community. I live in that community. We've tried to have a dialogue with the village, and the village mayor just does not wish to have one. And I've tried myself through intermediaries. I know everybody here, my brother, Steve Tinkelman, everyone has tried to do that. And that's, that's unfortunate because I cannot report to you any conversation that was had. There was a meeting about two, three weeks ago between the mayor and Mr. Eriko. It was, as described to me by Vito, it was pleasant. It was civil, but it came down to one message only. Oh, we love the project, but we're opposed to the pilot. And, and that's the problem here because no one says why we're opposed to the pilot. Why don't these numbers work? Because in fact, the numbers do work. So what I did was, I went through the Kamoyne Report. Maybe you've seen some of these letters. If I'm repeating myself, I apologize. But the first thing I look at in my community, in my town, and I would say my village because I'm in that place eating, eating dinner or walking on those streets three times a week. I literally live a mile and a half from where this project is, is that there are two levels of economic impact here. The Kamoyne Report makes very clear that 82% of the people who are going to come into this project and take these apartments do not live in Duchess County. That's new money coming into my town, new money coming into my village. Nobody, the mayor, nobody, the town has ever said, how much is that money? The Kamoyne Report says that of, that there'll be 46 new households, and those 46 new households will generate five and a half, will bring with them $5.5 million of household income. And of that $5.5 million in household income, 1.4 million will be spent. Now, keeping in mind, this is a county board, not just, I live there, so I kind of focused on that. But within the county, this will be of that 5.5, 1.4 million a year will be spent in, in our county, in our village, in our town. And given, if you've been to the site, it's all walkable, right? So it's all, you want to go out to dinner, you want to go shopping. I mean, there's, when I say shopping, I mean, basics food or if you, we have a big shop right, right down at the end there, about a mile and a half from this location. It's, but it's all extremely walkable business community up and down Main Street. And that, that also is something I want to just raise quickly with you in the design of this project. It's all walkable, which in my view says that of that $1.4 million a year that's going to be spent in our town, our village, our county, a lot of it's going to be spent where you can walk to where you want to spend the money. That's a big deal. I think walkability is, is a huge deal, and this enhances that. Here's how it enhances that. All of the design of this project has the parking off-site. The problem with that stretch of road is you can't park on it because of existing traffic patterns. And if you can't park on it, you can't get people to a place where they can stop, jump out, run into a store. So to have a commercial strip there, there's no place to park the cars. What, what has been designed in this project is that all of the parking will take place on-site. It won't squeeze any parking anywhere else. Nobody's going to know, no, no existing parking pattern for residents or, or business owners is going to be disrupted. Now, that's one level, which is the income that comes in. That impact will be felt immediately upon the matter, immediately upon a CO being issued. That impact will be felt immediately upon the matter, immediately upon a CO being issued, people moving in. And that will have also an impact on housing. Because the cost of a new house and a mortgage, a fourth mortgage, $300, $400,000 is going to well exceed the rent that will allow these units to, to populate. And, and that is another factor here. I think statewide IDAs are looking at the affordability of housing now in a, in a way that they had not previously looked at because of the demands that we now have as a society for more housing. The, the second level of this is long-term and it's jobs. What are we bringing here, jobs? Now, I have read communications that have come in and people are wrong. They say that this project will not generate jobs. The Camoyen Report says they're wrong. The Camoyen Report says that there will be two to two and a half, I don't know what two and a half jobs are, but that's what the Camoyen Report says about jobs at this site. I don't know who gets that half job. But the Camoyen Report also reports that there's a total of 17 jobs that will be added to our community as a consequence of this development, which will bring or increase earnings within our county of approximately $864,000. The Camoyen Report also takes the construction activity and aggregates it to a job count. Because as we know, a, a, a job site could have anywhere from 10 to 20 or 30 or 40 different workers over the space or maybe 100 different workers over a space of time of construction. But what the Camoyen Report did, and I'm referring specifically to the one that we received in August, was, was, would quantify that number and said, listen, when this thing is built, we're going to have the equivalent for two years of 32 full-time jobs with an earning of approximately $2 million. Fresh earnings, earnings that are not, now do not exist within our county, our town, or our village. $864,000 in permanent earnings that do not currently exist in our county or town or village. The report also goes on to, to detail what that means in terms of sales tax. But I'm more interested in talking a bit now about the tax analysis because, you know, I, I talk to folks in the village, right? So I have my sources. So some, you know, you go to restaurants, you hang out a little bit, you can talk to people, find out what's on people's mind. Because the government won't talk to us, the mayor won't talk to us. But I talked to people who are in the government and their position is we love the project because it's going to bring so much business into our, our, our community. And, but we don't, we don't like the pilot. Why don't we like the pilot? Well, we don't, we think you guys should pay your share of the taxes. Okay, okay. So what, what do those numbers look like? Well, nobody I've ever spoken to knows what those numbers look like. And I've done the numbers and I presented them to you in my letters in the last month. But I just think it's worth for this conversation to talk about the tax analysis of what this project looks like if it's not built. Because clearly you have your recommendation from the earlier Camoyen Report saying that this project needs the pilot. That's the first report. The second report gives us an economic analysis. So in the village of Fishkill, some people would like to see that plot of land remain vacant forever. Let's make it a park. If they were to do that in the village, the village, you know, only gets 17.5% of the total tax revenue or is only affected by 17.5% of what you do today with respect to the request in front of you. I did the math on that. And currently, if, if that piece of land remains a park, the per resident, per annum, tax benefit to every person in the village is 30 cents. 30 cents, quarter and a nickel. You can't even get a cup of coffee. Well, I remember when you could, but you can't get it now. Once this project is built out, the projection by Camoyen is that the per person tax revenue will be $2.57 per person. I'm sorry, will be $62.57. I'm sorry. My handwriting is horrible here this morning. When, if this project is not built out, the village will get $3.58 per person in tax revenue. That's what they currently get and that's what they will get. It will remain flat. If, when this project is completely built out and when this pilot is, is now exhausted over the 10 years, if granted, the average tax revenue per person in the village will be $30.54. The town is, was belatedly heard by a letter from Stephen Gabba, which you have my response to, which was replete with passion, but totally empty when it comes to facts. When you look at this, it's interesting about the town, right? Because the town only gets 16% of this tax bill. And they, they have a much larger population. The town, the village is like 2,200 people. The town's like 22,000. So from their share of the tax bill, if this thing remains a park, they get 30 cents per person. I had these mixed stuff, I'm sorry. And once the project is built out, they get $2.50 per person. So those are the gross numbers. Those are the economic benefits to our county, my town and my village. And no one talks about that in any of the opposition that I've read, none of it. Nobody has any of those numbers in that opposition or rebuts any of those numbers in those oppositions. And those are not my numbers. Those are the numbers that are in the Camoyen Report. But what you, you have had in front of you is a series of arguments from the village. And I've, I've laid out to you why as a matter of law, the letters from the mayor and the trustees cannot be considered to be official policy on the part of the village because they didn't comply with the law when they presumed to make that statement. But it doesn't really make any difference. I mean, that's, that's just lawyer talk really. There, the point, the opinion is voiced and it says, wait a minute, you can't do this because it's just a residential project. Well, that's not the case. You can do this. You, you may, you may, you have to look at the economic impact. You know that better than me. You do this. I only come here once every 10 years. You can do that. In fact, there's, there's political, societal and, and just plain housing need that would ask you to do that. The second thing they say is no jobs will be created. We have the Camoyen Report. We know that statement's not true. There's 17 new permanent jobs, $864,000 per year in new earnings will be generated by this project as projected by Camoyen. There is a talk about, I guess in Mr. Gabba's letter, he said, listen, this is going to definitely put so much pressure on the school district. Well, the Camoyen Report that you got in August of 2025 says this. This project will generate three, not 30, not 13, not 300, just three new students to the Woffordshire Central School District, which I'm assuming that they can absorb without, or any creating any degree of chaos. But there's, there's one big, big kind of myth here I want to just take on here. In the letters from the village, they talk about their contract with the Empress ambulance system. They, I, I, I'm not quite to that point where I have to worry about what ambulance is going to pick me up. I was suspecting a couple of years it'll really be something, a focus of, of my concern. But the, that argument in that letter says, listen, we're the village and we just signed a new contract with Empress Ambulance for $200,000 a year. And if this project is, is, is approved, it's going to drive that cost up even higher. I don't, I don't like that argument because it's not honest. The, this project was approved in the spring of 2024. The contract that the Empress Ambulance System entered into with the village was entered into at the end of that year, December 31, 2024. So at the time that contract was signed, the village already knew this project was in place and going to be built. So it's rational and reasonable to say that the village, in contemplating the level of service required under that contract and the cost of it, had already factored in the population that would be generated by the result of this project. After all, the village had redesigned its zoning to allow it. It had redesigned its zoning to make the project compatible with its comprehensive plan. So they knew that. So the argument that somehow this project is going to drive the cost of the ambulance service, just, it, it fails to take into consideration that the village knew about this population when it negotiated that, that contract. Now, I don't, I don't fault anyone for having an opinion. It's a very heated topic politically. But I, I'm assuming here we're not talking politics. We're talking economic impact because politics were dealt with when the village rezoned. The politics were dealt with, the zoning issues were dealt with during the planning process, which was very detailed and now concluded. The only thing that I looked at at the end of this thing was what, what will it cost the taxpayers of my town and my village, including myself, if this project is granted? If this pilot request is approved by your board? Now, I didn't, I didn't do it by taxpayer because I, I didn't, I just, I don't have those, I don't have that data availability. And a taxpayer could be the people that own a shop, right? I just did it by per person. But in the village, in the village, there's an expense here. If you take 18% of the requested pilot over the lifetime of the pilot, over 10 years, it'll cost $6.48 per person in the village per year. If you, to get this pilot, the, the result of which, though, that is the cost to be measured against the benefit that will come to the village once this project is concluded, including the fact that its revenue will be $32, $30.52 per person after the project is concluded and the, and the pilot period has ended. The cost to the town per person is 55 cents. 55 cents, still not enough to buy a cup of coffee. And at the end of the pilot period, the tax rate will kick up to $2.57 per person. But in the meantime, during that 10 years, my town, my village will have the benefit of 1.5 million dollars per year of new money that we've never seen before. That's going to come into our communities and be spent in our communities during that entire 10 years. So while, while there is a cost and there can be no doubt there's a cost, it's, it's a measurable cost. 55 cents, $56.48 a year if you're a villager, but you get to share in that 1.5 million of people who now have moved into your community during that 10 years. And then afterwards, what you get back is $30.52 a year in return. And that, that of course assumes a stability in the village, which I think, I don't know, I don't think there's room for any more new housing in the village. But that, that's what we have. And so I would conclude this by saying, what I've tried to do in the last month, after I realized that nobody in the village would talk to me, was to share the information I've, I've, I've provided to you today with everybody who had an interest in it. All of my communications with the board went to the village. When I get the town's letter, I, I responded directly through the town because I wanted everyone to see the way I was analyzing it because I could be mistaken. I could be wrong in the way I'm looking at those numbers. But I think it's a very important to note, despite given that opportunity, nobody has contradicted what I have given you as my analysis of the Camoyen Report. And in my world, in my business in a courtroom, when nobody contradicts what you've said, it's an admission that you're correct. And I would, the village has had an opportunity to respond and say, no, these numbers are wrong. They didn't. Town has had an opportunity to respond and say, these numbers are wrong. They haven't. And I would ask you to consider that as a very important fact because what you have, I think, in front of you is the numbers I've given you are now without contradiction and should be accepted as admitted as to what the value of this project would be to my county, my town and my village. So thank you very much for letting me go on a little longer than I anticipated. I made notes, I had to cover it all, right? Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Does anybody else on your team have?
Steven? I'll try to keep this brief.
Come here and speak well enough so people can hear you.
I appreciate, you know, the detail of, of Ken's financial presentation. I think that, that's important data. What I want to do is speak a little differently about the, the tonality, the architecture. And just what we've tried to create because I think part of what we're trying to create is also something that you can't quantify today, but it has to do with the value of the community, the future of the community and ultimately its long-term success. I want to start out by acknowledging my, my partners here. They have a tremendous track record in the housing field. And so the effort that's gone into creating something of a quality that hasn't been seen in Duchess County before is, is really remarkable because it's thoughtful and, and it's really well conceived in its detail. I've had the privilege of being in front of you on, on many occasions and as recently as last month. And, you know, two of the projects, one was La Grange Farms, which was all housing. That wouldn't have happened without you. Came about through support from the supervisor, Alan Bell. When he first looked at the proposal and the, the deep financial analysis that we did and we realized we couldn't make it work without a pilot. And he looked at it and said, I don't believe in pilots. Let me look at it and I'll get back in two weeks. He became the biggest supporter for the effort and it's on, it's on record here coming through. And he was, he was shepherding that process. You've been supportive of my Van Wagner Place project. And again, that project similarly would not have happened. And it's a new neighborhood that's really coming along and we're continuing to work there. I think the other part of the Van Wagner Westerly project goes back to the fact that we, we worked with the municipalities really early on in the process to deliver components that were politically important to the municipality. And we talked about it a little bit last month. And, you know, that's part of the success of, of those projects. You know, has to do with collaboration with government. So there are a lot of people at the table there. So going back to talking about the thoughtfulness of this, if we create something of value here and we're looking at trying to create a sense of place and a sense of, of apartment living that is different from what it was 20 and 30 years ago, that this is really home replacement and is actually in some price points, a lot less expensive and less demanding, given current, you know, requirements in life to have a good, high quality of, of life here. So not only are the apartments thoughtfully laid out and specified and sustainable, they, there, there are components here that make you want to live in a community because there's public features that, you know, we're creating as part of this project. The sustainable stuff also is really important because part of the quality of your space is the amount of natural light, you know, beyond what walkable stuff is obvious and what Ken was talking about. But there's tremendous amount of insulation, great windows, amount of glass. The glass that we use are similar to the last project you supported, which was a 44 spring site, which are these intus windows that are, are so well rendered that the amount of noise that you hear and that's a busy intersection is minimal. And the fact that they, from an energy point of view, are also quite remarkable in terms of the efficiency of. in terms of the efficiency of heating and cooling in an apartment. But so Ken touched upon a couple of things. Our process with the village was extensive, and it was the result of us carefully reading the comp plan and following it so that we asked for no variances whatsoever. We followed the ordinance as it ran. The secret process was also detailed as it needs to be. There was also that we're in a historic overlay zone there. So we had substantial conversations and process with SHPO. And we ended up working through some real nice improvements for the project because they were concerned about some of the scaling issues and some of the details. And we've worked all that through and got their approval for what we're doing as well. And that was an important process. There's some other economic village benefits that Ken didn't mention that are not insubstantial. Our building this project gives the village $280,000 of recreation fees. So that money can go into public benefit there. There's also work that we're doing on the intersection of Jackson and Main for the DOT. Again, very detailed look at traffic and improvements there. And they want to make the intersection more pedestrian-friendly and such. So we're spending a quarter of a million dollars in doing improvements to that intersection as well. An important part of the improvements here. So in regard to community, again, this is an extremely important intersection. It's an empty site right now. It's really the gateway to coming down Main Street. And the idea of having life there, and an enhanced sense of place because our design was looking at the village and trying to enhance the village and really making it a stronger community. Our business plan is to own this for a real long time. And so we're putting in the improvements here that are the right thing to do in a thoughtful development. And I think Ken touched upon why this became a full housing project. We originally had designed a project that had first-floor commercial. And the world has changed in terms of local commercial stuff with no parking. And I think Ken made that point. So again, I think the density that we've talked about here, we're doing 24 units per acre, is a really positive density, not overcrowded. It has still the same feeling as the village. So part of this was to, how do you get these units to fit in and all that? Because part of it is to raise the ship up here, the values of property. People come to the community and start new businesses here. Because all the numbers are based upon what's there now. But housing brings more jobs, jobs bring more people. Successful businesses bring other successful businesses. You know all this stuff. So that's part of the pitch here. The last thing is, going back to materiality, this is not designed to just be flippant about what the project is. We're not using vinyl siding. I mentioned the windows and stuff like that. There's heavy landscaping going into the project, heavy site lighting to make it a beautiful part of the intersection. We're taking advantage of using all the existing cities or village streets and stuff like that. So there's not a lot of change to the dynamic of that intersection. And the last thing, we were thoughtful in the way we laid out the site so it blends into the smaller houses that are behind the property. So it was really comprehensive. That's kind of what we do. Our team here spent a long time working through a lot of things and revisions. And we think that this will be meaningful architecturally, in terms of the fabric, in terms of how the village will feel. And these are all value adds to the basic economic stuff that Ken talked about. So thank you for letting me go through that.
Absolutely. Thank you. Don, would you have a comment? Do you look like?
No. I just think it's important to clarify when we talk about residential. This is commercial. When it's rental property, it's commercial, it's authorized.
Component, I think.
It's an authorized component on Article 18A of the general municipal law. That's not so for single-family housing. And we often hear the two matters mixed. So an example is Bellfield because it's part of, it has both. And I hear people talking about single-family homes. How can you prove those? But that's not true. This is a commercial project as far as the general municipal is concerned.
Members of the board, comments, questions?
Oh, I have a few questions.
Go ahead, Ken.
Mr. Tinkelman, so the reason we got here is because the whole basis of this project is that you're seeking a pilot plus sales tax exemption, plus mortgage tax exemption. Because the affordability of the project, you can't meet to make this project go through. And is that part of the building cost? Or is it part of the interest, the higher interest rates in this environment right now?
Good question. I think it's all the above. I think the idea of building today is unstable. So it's the cost of money, it's the cost of construction. Matter of fact, the Pork Chop 44 Spring Side project I mentioned that we built last year, I bet if I started that now, the cost of that would be 10% to 15% more than just a year ago. Maybe even more than that. So it's the instability of lending institutions in terms of what they give money to. So it's all the above. And the pro forma that we've submitted to you, which I hope you've had a chance to, is detailed. And I bet there are things in there that we're going to have to pay attention to in this springy, rising tide market. I just had an experience on a project where the insurance doubled in one year. So to your question, it's all the above.
Because during COVID, we had several projects come back to us where they needed additional sales tax relief because of the cost of products during COVID had skyrocketed.
Right.
So the question I have is, what type of interest rates are you looking at? Just to get a feel, once the construction financing is complete, what rate area, and do you have a bank that you're committed with at this point?
We've been working with Rhinebeck Bank. They've been a lead lender for me. But they've met with the whole group. We've presented to them. We have a letter of intent from them. We've been meeting regularly. I had a conversation with them yesterday. Construction interest is three over the benchmark right now, which is about 7.5%, which is crazy. We're seeing and we're hoping that interest rates are going to drop a little bit over the next quarter. Because you hear stories about that, but you don't know the interest rates now are close to six in long-term financing, something like that, in that range. It could be a little bit higher, a little bit lower. So that's what we're seeing in today's snapshot, or as of yesterday.
Because when I looked at the Camoin Report, and I know your council touched a lot on the economic benefits, but one interest, one point in interest, if you went 5.5 and 6.5, increases the project cost of about $5.7 million. If I do a 30-year amortization at $25 million at 5.5 and 6.5, the cost of those funds is additional $5.7 million, which we haven't discussed. So that is significant. The flip side is, this has been a contentious project because we do not have a letter of acceptance from the village. But, Don, that's not needed on these projects, correct?
Correct. You have a uniform tax exemption policy.
Right.
And the factors, it is a factor that the board should consider.
Because generally, we like to be on the side of the municipality. But when you see 56 units coming into Dutchess County, where if you read the Dutchess County Affordable Housing, the Dutchess County Needs and Assessment Study, we're at 6,000 or 7,000 or 8,000 apartments in the hole. And this is 56 apartments that would support the county's need. Though unfortunately, there are no affordable units, which during the new comprehensive plan in the village of Fishkill did not require affordable units. Is that correct?
Right.
And the retail, was it an issue, or it was, or you didn't have to do retail on the bottom floors? Or how was that discussion with the village?
It didn't come up. It's not required where the zoning is rendered. And we also had the conversation about doing our own market research. Because originally, that was what our plan was. And we were concerned about it because the financing right now is, as we just discussed, that much more complicated. It's easier for a purely residential project in this particular environment. So that was the direction we went in. But there was no discussion about the affordable stuff. And as I mentioned, the town of Poughkeepsie, we had that conversation early on. That was a request of the supervisor. So then you design it right from the jump in that regard. Maybe the last point is that if our rents, as they're indicated in our pro forma, are thousands of dollars less than owning a home, given the fact if you took a $400,000 mortgage, which is about $2,600 at 6%, and then you add taxes of maybe $1,000 a month, and then you add your insurance and all that, you're in the range of $4,000 or $5,000 a month, and that doesn't include your down payment. So on a funny level, this is not affordable to what we really need in the community on a different level. But this is affordable for working-class people. If you look at the idea of, and I'm sorry for the ramble on this, but if you take a $2,500 a month apartment, that's $30,000 a year. If a healthy range of affordability is 30%, 33%, and it's up at 50% right now in the metrics, this is a $90,000 a year income requirement to successfully live here. That's two $45,000 salaries. That's achievable in the marketplace today on some level. It's not wonderful, but it's, you know, but the idea of producing housing on any level, I think maybe what you were saying is there's such a need across the whole spectrum, right? And I think the idea of supporting all housing, we're not asking the government, and these affordable projects, tax credit projects, demand so much more money from us as taxpayers. And the numbers are significant, way different from what Ken was talking about than us doing the market rate project and getting it. In this case, it's only a 10-year pilot. You've been giving.
I understand. So also, there was a letter submitted to the IDA from the Village of Fishkill Planning Board Chairman that said, Fishkill zoning, the planning board has determined that this multifamily project is consistent with the Village of Fishkill Comprehensive Plan and Village of Fishkill Zoning Code and will provide additional housing units which are needed for the village. So that's one statement that Fishkill needs this. Then, as the IDA trying to hash through whether it is needed for you to have these benefits, so we go to the Camoin Report, which prepares reports nationwide for IDAs. In its reasonable assessment and finance, it says in its conclusion that assistance is necessary for this project to be financially feasible. So whether the public sees this or all our board members, it's a very interesting read. It talks about that the rent is above the median rent in Dutchess County, as he had just said. So the Camoin Report validates the reason or the necessity of the pilot. Another report done by Camoin is the Economic and Fiscal Impact Analysis, which was incredibly interesting. And your council touched on that about how each individual, making 30% of their income going towards rent and almost $25,000 a year being spent per tenant of new people coming to Dutchess County was like 46 out of 56, or even if you say 40. The economic impact locally to Fishkill and Dutchess County, I believe outweighs the pilot. And then the one number that you just struck me with during your conversation is that you're paying $280,000 in rec fees? Is that correct?
Yes.
So $280,000 in rec fees and a quarter million to redo the intersection, while the pilot is $780,000 in missed taxes or left-on-the-table taxes to the Village of Fishkill, then the town, I guess?
The franchise, the town, the school district?
And the county.
Right, and the county.
It's $780,000,
Right.
of which you're almost putting back $500,000 to $600,000 in benefits to the community through the rec and the intersection.
It's bigger than that. You have to take that $780,000 and you have to divide it, in the case of the village, by 18%.
Right.
Because that $780,000 is not, although it needs to be clear here, the village is absorbing 18% of that $780,000.
Right.
So you can do math on that. That's roughly $150,000. And I have my notes, but I'm not going to. That's roughly $150,000, $160,000. Over the next 10 years, they're getting back that, they're getting more than their contribution in a rec fee.
Who gets the rec fee, the village or the town?
The village gets it.
The village is getting all $280,000.
Dedicated fee that the village cannot use to defray its operating expenses. It is a fee that's dedicated to providing or repairing or expanding existing recreational, public recreational facilities within the village.
So is that a one-time fee, or is that payable over the 10-year pilot?
No, you pay it upfront.
Okay.
In fact, I believe it's been paid.
Okay.
And that's a huge number. And you take that, you add that to the work done at that intersection, I can tell you as a consumer witness, that needs to be done. It needs to be done now, and we're paying for it. And that's $250,000. So they're getting point of return on their $180,000.
If I just finish up with the economic and fiscal impact, the annual impact, the summary that Camoin has, this is a report that we don't often get. It states that sales associated with onsite operations, household spending are estimated to generate $25,000 in sales tax for the county annually. 2.6 million over 10-year pilot on average is approximately $259,000. The applicant has negotiated the terms of the proposed pilot. An agreement with the agency includes a 10-year pilot agreement. Under this proposed pilot agreement, the applicant would pay is approximately $2.6 million over the 10-year pilot, an average term of $259,000. That would be the economic impact to the county, the village, and the town, would be $259,000. Now, as the land sits currently, I believe the assessment is only, the tax dollars coming in, Year one, with the pilot, would be $134,327. On a sliding scale on a 10-year normal pilot, the first three or four years are heavy, and then the town then starts to reap the backend of the tax payments. So between the two Camoin Reports that I have to heavily rely on, it seems that this project would fit our scope within the IDA to offer general prosperity and economic welfare to the people of the state and the Ark. So that's just my two cents.
Jamie, thank you very much. It's a really thorough discussion. And I appreciate this level of detail in this discussion very much because clearly what we need as a board, and we've discussed this, is a greater level of discussion on precisely this topic, on housing relative to our IDA business. And I look forward to being able to participate in that and bring some of these ideas to it. Certainly, the level of planning that you have done is very detailed. And I know you've put a lot of time and trouble into that over the years. Does anybody else have a comment, then?
I guess, not including this project, but just, I'm relatively new. I've been on the board a year. And I can't recall a project. And I did some historical research, but it's kind of hard to dive into, as you guys know, some of the agenda in your minutes. Can you give some historical knowledge for you guys who have been on the board? When is the last time you approved a pilot when you didn't have, when you had such an outpouring of non-support from your municipality and bordering towns and villages? It just seems to me. It just seems to me, I know it's not the factor, but it is a factor we need to consider. So I'm just trying to understand what the process has been in the past.
Well, one of the biggest factors is that we probably have not. But one of the mitigating factors is that on all the other towns and cities in the county, they have a separate fire district, library district, plus the town and school tax. Where when a pilot comes into effect, the school, the fire district and the library district do not get an exemption. They get the full value at 100% year one. And in this case, one of the stronger arguments that the municipality made was the ambulance service. Because they don't have, the Village of Fishkill does not have its own library or fire district. So it's coming out of their general fund, I would guess, out of the town, of the Village of Fishkill. So that's one of the reasons. Normally, almost every, every project we have ever had, we've had a letter of support.
Well, that's great. Even when I just look at the one we just, you know, the POU, obviously, the, you know, the superintendent of schools and the town supervisor, I've written letters of support where this is the exact opposite. So I know it's not the factor, but it is a factor I'm heavily considering.
Right, right. And it's nice to always go with the municipality. This is a tough one.
It is. And I guess, in the, I guess, just as a process, I think as a board when we have discussions, that should be one of our discussions as where this application falls on our lap in a meeting when we don't have that support.
Now, just one moment.
It's a separate conversation.
We have, we have in our UTEP policy document four criteria that apply to this category of application. And the fourth is a study should be done. We've not only done one, we've done two studies at the applicant's expense. There, the, there's a, an item for requiring it to be part of a walkable neighborhood near or close to town or community centers that it should be in compliance with. Actually, our, our policy says master plan, but I believe the current term is comprehensive plan. And then lastly, that it should be supported by the municipality. So it's those, those are the four items. I think that, you know, it's a little, it's scant, which is why we're dealing with this in this way. But this is a fine discussion. So go ahead, Mr. Stenka.
I appreciate the point just made. And my only request and perhaps advice to your board in considering the point just raised is that I think what we have to look at is the nature and the quality of the objection or the lack of support. Where does it come from? Is it political? Is it economic? Is it planning? Is it zoning? That's, that's something for you to consider. But I think to just say, we don't have the support of the village, which clearly you don't have the letter. We don't. And the next question is, why don't we have it? Because if it's just politics, if it's just a small group of people in that village that would like to have a park rather than this complex, it's a factor for you to consider because that's not relevant to your analysis as to, I don't think it's relevant. I apologize. I'm not trying to tell you what's relevant or not, judge or killing if I said that. But I think it's an important factor for your board to look at in your, in your debate. Where is this failure of support coming from, given the fact that the village board, with the mayor leading the charge, designed its zoning code to allow this project to be built? Why is it now, at this late in the game, the village's position is, let's cripple that project by denying them the pilot that any, any other applicant might get throughout the rest of the county? Why is that? In their letters to you, they give you no fact. They give you no number. They give you no reason for this, except what you can see is just general oppositional animus. And I would respectfully suggest to you that that's not, that in your four factors, when you consider the village's position, that's part of your analysis. How you make that analysis is your business. I just wanted to raise that point that it not be lost. It's the quality of the opposition that plays into this application.
Thank you, Mr. Stenka.
One other thing, if I might, is the planning board, the planning board voted unanimously to approve the project.
Yeah, that's on the record. Very good. Paul and Brian?
No comments. I'm good. Thank you.
Well, the part I'm struggling with is the housing needs assessment for Duchess County. It seems that we, we have a deficiency in housing in Duchess County of middle-income to lower-income housing, workforce housing, affordable housing, whatever you call it, which you'd like. But it seems that this does not address that at all. The housing that this, that this creates is more upper-income housing. It's not targeted for Duchess County residents. In fact, you're saying that most of the residents will come from out of, out of the county. So I'm struggling with how this, how this benefits the, or how this affects the, the housing crisis we have. And another thing is that you say it creates jobs with your own, your own numbers. These jobs that it creates don't, these jobs, the people that get these jobs can't afford to live in this kind of housing. So if we have, if we're creating jobs in Duchess County at this level, we're only kind of setting ourselves back even further when it comes to housing for the people that get these jobs. Whereas an industrial complex that gets an IDA benefit is going to create jobs for people that are concerned at all levels of ranges of housing in Duchess County. This is, the jobs created by this, by this project will only, will only, will only bring in, affect people that can afford lower levels of housing. And another thing too is with the economic impact of the construction project, I am fairly new to this board also, and I have not seen a project that has a negative economic impact. I think any construction project, any development project is going to have positive economic impact. So relative to other developments, is this, what is, what does, what in excess of other developments does this bring to the table? It doesn't, it doesn't address our housing needs. It doesn't bring a more positive economic impact than another development. And, and the town will say, will say it is lukewarm to it. That was an understatement.
I'd just like to address two quick points. I wasn't around for this, but the Village of Fishkill creates a zoning code, which in its wisdom as the elected representatives of the citizens of Fishkill, address issues of housing and address several of the issues you've just raised. They rezoned this property specifically to allow this project to be built as it has been built. If the Village of Fishkill, and it's their call, not my call. We just live with the rules as they're made. If the Village of Fishkill had wished to create a different sort of housing, it would have happened during the course of that zoning process. It didn't happen. We are entirely consistent with the Village of Fishkill's expression for the needs for their citizens in terms of housing as they've expressed it in adopting their zoning. We didn't ask for a variance. We didn't ask for anything. We were 100% compliant with what the village created. And keep in mind, what I said before, it's important. And I appreciate, I appreciate the heartfelt nature of your expression. But there's a little history here. This project has been in the making for several, several years. Before an application was filed, the village changed its zoning code to accommodate this project at this location, excuse me, with the design that is presently before you. And when that project went before the planning board, it was approved with the design that was consistent with the zoning. And once we've done that, we have to say, at least we as the developers have to say, look, we've done what the political leadership of that village has said to be done and what they need. And we've, we can't, we can't do more than that. We can't do less than that. We have to do that. We did exactly what we were asked to do by the zoning code, by the government. So I, and I don't, I think I want to make clear that, that should address some of that. The numbers that I've given you today are not numbers I've made up or that the project has created. They come from the Camoin Report. The Camoin Report does not say that the 17 jobs that are created, that the people wouldn't be able to afford to live in this project.
Well, it said that 17 jobs would create $800,000.
$864,000. I think, I think the quote in the, in the report, at least.
So average?
Average is. I don't, I don't know.
It's about $40,000? $40,000 a year?
That may be something you may want to ask the Camoin Report people. I didn't do those numbers. I'm just saying what's in the report.
Welcome to, to the planning commissioner on Raptor on one item which actually would help us in general understand some aspects of development in the county. And that is not included in the numbers of the analysis that we have today so far. And that is actually the cost of community services. So yes, we have the positive, the revenue aspects, but not so much the, the costs of community services for different types of development. There was some 25 or 30 years ago, a study done in Duchess County, but, but not recently. So from a point of view of speaking to you as a representative of the legislature, that would be an interesting update from a development, for the development community and for development consideration.
Mark, if I can add a couple of things. The Village of Fishkill benefits by something that's extraordinary and very different from the rest of the county, is there's an apartment complex that's stacked across the street from our, our project, which is called the Old Pulse Mall. And I believe, and again, I believe there's 280 apartments in there, something like that. And so if you assume that there's two, there's at least 280 people living in those apartments, the, that's more than 12% or 15% of the entire community. Those, and there's probably 500 people because it's very likely you have two per apartment. Those apartments are 1,250 for a one-bedroom, 1,450 for, they're, they're between 1,250 and 1,800, 1,800 for three bedrooms, the 1,450 for two bedrooms and the 1,200 for one bedroom. That's really cheap. That's really inexpensive. I mean, it's a well-kept-up complex. And so they have the highest level of affordable housing in the entire county. And if those numbers are right. So you would think that if the affordable was really an important piece, which it is to all of us. But in order to make the, the project work that we've designed, we've tried to build bigger apartments to be home replacement, to do a little different. The requirements also include using local, you know, workforce here. So the construction, there's, there's an obligation in our agreement with you that the jobs here are even richer than that. And then you started going into an area that I think is fascinating too is that we're actually helping the village in ways that are not in the Camoin Report is we're buying water, you know? So their water plant works better. And you're paying for sewer. So all that stuff, you know, should help the, the stability of those, you know, the water and sewer infrastructure for the community as well. I think there's other pieces to that. The last piece that you brought up, which I think is also really a good, deep conversation, is that there's a lot of text today on, if no matter what housing you create, it opens up opportunities on all levels. So if you build even the most expensive housing, you're adding to the housing stock that is in need of new units. And it creates then opportunity for all the other different levels of housing. And there's a lot of reports on that. So this is just a, you know, adding units is a real positive thing, given the dire need in the, in the community for, I think you mentioned 5,000 units or something.
So now, I think that's debatable about that trickle-down housing. But even if that's the case in this case, if you create 56 high-level housing opportunities and you think that that's going to present an opportunity for lower, of lower-level housing, it's still being filled by people that don't live in Duchess County. So what does it do for Duchess County?
Again, I go back to the number I, and we can, you have a really rich conversation on this. But if, if your apartment is $2,500, right? And it's, so it costs $30,000 a year and you have two people that are earning a living in that apartment that make $90,000, the, the thought is that that's affordable. And if we're building high-quality stuff that not expensive to heat and, you know, you don't have other things like having to maintain the lawns and stuff like that, it's, it's just choices. It makes for a richer, diverse community, Mark. The projects that you've supported for me have brought in older people, younger people, all kinds. And it's, and that's the diversity that we're hoping we'll achieve here.
Well, thank you. Thank you all. This was a thorough discussion. Go ahead.
There was just one more point that jumped out. Yardie Matrix is a real estate rental newsletter that comes out. And they had talked about the city of Austin and how it was one of the most expensive cities for six years until 2022, 2023. The city, which is completely different demographics, fast-tracked the apartment building sector. And it accounted for like 18% of all new apartments in the country. And as a result of this fast track, rents have come down 22% since 2023. You can Google Austin, fast-track Yardie Matrix. So, and what it would basically say is supply and demand. Obviously, we don't have the supply. Fair market housing is going to call for higher rents. But if we could ever get to that point where we have more housing than needed, the rents will come down. And then, you know, one of our board members relocated, but the first thing he did was he sold his house. He sold his house and he moved to Eastdale. Now, that house then went on to the market for a homeowner to then buy that house that maybe was new to the area. He then went to Eastdale for two years, retired down south. So, you know, his house was added to the inventory. It's just a tough, we're in such a tough area because everyone's migrating to a cheaper Duchess County from Westchester. And, you know, the, the whole basis is that we need supply. And we're going to see a lot more of these projects come through. And our board's going to have to adapt to where if we can't get affordable housing from the municipalities, we're going to have to force these applicants to start contributing to the Duchess County Affordable Housing Trust on a per-unit basis. And if you read the last two press releases, I think in the last year, I think they've given well over $1 or $2 million to the housing trust, to applicants to build affordable housing in Duchess County. And they're looking, if you read that, you know, Housing and Needs Assessment, we need 120 units per year to get to the point of 1,200 units in 10 years. So, you know, we're at the beginning. And unfortunately, they're one of the first applicants that are, that are coming through.[1688.46] And we're going to see a lot more coming through in the next three years because a lot of the industrial space is now gone. So we're going to be facing with these, these, um, commercial slash apartment applicants.
Well, I think that raises actually a, a good point is that there are multiple tools available for, um, for development, for housing development, um, and perhaps more that should be available and, um, in, through the county process. Um, but this particular body is the IDA and we're dealing with, uh, tax exemptions, taxes. And, um, my point of view is that, uh, taxes and revenues are, um, are decided upon by the municipal entities, be that town, village, uh, uh, boards. And, uh, for, for multiple reasons, they come up, they make their decisions. Um, they, uh, they may in fact make incorrect decisions, but those are, those are the decisions they make. So, um, I think that it's an, it, we've, we've discussed the, the, um, pros and cons of an, on an economic basis, um, and the facts stack up, you know, 100%. Um, on that basis, I wish that the county had these other tools in line. Absolutely do. But, but I think that to, to, um, not necessarily ignore, but to minimize the, uh, need for municipal support would be a grave mistake. Anyway, so, um, I, I would like to, um, to finish this, to call for, um, a vote first of all, to see, um, if we would have somebody to make a motion and then a second.
I'll make a motion for the final authorization to approve the project providing mortgage tax, sales tax, and a pilot for this project.
I'll second.
Thank you both. Call the roll then?
Sure. Bejra Housing?
No.
Tom LaCout?
No.
James Pecorn?
Yes.
Ryan Barryan?
Yes.
Mark Doyle?
None.
Thank you. You have, um, put a great deal of money and effort and time into this. Um, and I wish it could be different. I wish that we had been able to, um, bring to the table the village and the other, uh, components, but we weren't.
Oh, are you going to meet you? I was going to say.
I'm just going to continue right through because we've been going for quite a while.
Yeah.
Thank you. That's fine.
Thank you. Mr. Cameron, there were three items on that vote. Can we have a vote on the remaining two, the sales tax and the mortgage tax?
No, well, I think the motion included all three.
I did.
Thank you.
Would that vote have changed? Mortgage or no?
I have to look at it more carefully.
Yeah.
I didn't consider it in my, in my thinking.
No, just because I did all three. I mean, should I have done them separately?
I mean, I think if, if they were going to be, uh, we're, we're going to have to do the full cost-benefit analysis to really consider.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Yes.
And you read them through?
Yeah. Yep, I read the agenda. All right, let's move on.
Okay, so moving on. So Melane has left. I think we, we have, um, a report in our, um, pack from Duchess County Tourism. Would you take a look at that? We, she will come back at the next meeting, I believe.
I'm sure. She did leave some bullets if you want me to read them or otherwise if you want to do it at the next meeting.
We can read through them.
Yeah.
Just thank her for her well.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, her, her thorough.
She's very enthusiastic.
Yes. Just make sure she receives our thanks for, please.
Absolutely. And, you know, without, uh, tourism, um, I think we'd be looking at a very different economic development picture. Really critical component. So, um, that said, Jane, you're going to do the, um.
They're in the, uh, the back of the page.
The LDC?
The last page. Renee would, you want me to do this? She was, uh, had a meeting this morning.
Right.
The first one is the, um, IDA projects. So far, none have been approved yet this year, this quarter. For the LDC projects, we had the, um, the one, which is the CIA, right? That was, that was approved. Then they're going to retain, no new FTEs, they're going to be retaining the, um, 1,00173. Then business attraction. See, there was a number of requests, 12. And then the number of trade shows that were attended by the staff, there was two. And again, the, the last is the, I think the business retention. Site visits 14, general business consultant 20, referred businesses to community partners 42. And I think that's, and then the last page was the advertising.
Right.
Now, um, as of right now, we've, um, we haven't put any more advertising out till, um, we have that hold since Sarah's not, you know, we don't have a CEO yet to decide on, you know, uh, taking out ads the last third and fourth quarter.
Correct.
That still has to be.
You do have ongoing blogs and posts.
Oh, yes, yes. But this is like to take an ad out in the, um, trade magazine or something like that. So.
Interestingly, um, you detailed a post in LinkedIn.
Did Amy leave?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Yeah. And I should have said that.
I was just thinking that she's out in the other waiting for us.
She had an emergency that she had to attend to, so I'm sorry.
Plus, she's waiting a long time.
I know.
And she was waiting a long time. But I think she really did have an emergency. So, um, question on the LinkedIn post for CEO. Uh, was there any response through that process?
Yes, there was quite a few.
Excellent.
Um, so we had the LinkedIn, we had, um, Indeed, and then we had the website.
Yeah.
Okay. We had over 200.
155 applicants. Residents came in. Uh, I mean, there were some that didn't even have like a year's experience or something. So Jasmine was good enough to wean through all of the ones that don't even bother looking at.
Considerable amount of work, having.
Yes.
Been on an ongoing basis, basis, doing that kind of thing myself. Um, so I really appreciate it, Jasmine. It's a lot of, a lot of reading and, and detail. And now, um, well, let's just, uh, finish your report and then.
I think that, that's basically the last page. I'm sorry, I'm not more thorough. Um, I usually don't get involved in the reporting, um, for the, you know, the site visits. That would be Renee.
But it is interesting that, so I guess that's the CIA, uh, retention of jobs through doing.
That was the.
1,173 jobs retained.
Mm-hmm.
So that's a numerical.
That was the closing that we had. Just do, was.
Well, what page was that?
Second, it was, it was last month. It was for the, so that's for the LDC.
So it's kind of a.
It has the projects, the IDA, the first page, second is the projects of the LDC.
Got you. So, um, let's just have an update on the search for the CEO because I think that's the most critical part for our next business or perhaps in between.
Um, yes. Um, uh, we went through and I think we, we had picked 16 that we were looking at. And then we weaned it down to maybe 10. Um, and then what we did was we took about six of them. Um, and we had a, I, um, I had forwarded you a, a schedule of just a rating, you know, based on, um, community familiarity. Um, uh, I'm trying to think, management experience. There was a list and we went through.
Competencies we focused on and scored them independently.
Excellent.
Um, we, we tried to look for somebody that had everything, you know, but it was difficult. Somebody was more in the field of, um, a foundation type.
Yeah.
But it did have the management, the, you know, all the other skills that would be needed. So we narrowed it down to three. There was one that I really liked, but, um, uh, they had, we had done a check and it, um, the, their background check was not good. Yeah, so, um, you know, we weaned people out that way too. So we were, ended up with three, um, that we, I provided.
All right. And what's our next?
Well, scored them independently. And then we looked at our scores and looked for deviations, significant deviations. We went back and had a discussion to understand it, scored them again. And then we went back with the additional ones that we had received and went through them. And, um, Jane had put together that email, which, uh, we, we did not provide you with our scores. We don't want to bias, you know, your opinion and review. And so, uh, I think we're looking at setting up a, a meeting to, for you all to interview them, whoever wants to participate. Yeah, so we should of course be doing this in the LDC. Uh, but it's, it's the same discussion. So there we are.
Yeah.
So, uh, I.
Should, should we dismiss the IDA going to the LDC at this point?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do that. And then we can actually do this in business because we have to.
And if we're, you do, we are, we are looking at the same skill set, mostly the skill set for the IDA.
So, um, right, so if we adjourn the IDA.
Yes.
Meeting, thank you very much.